It's eight o'clock time to start our pre-agenda meeting. I will remind everyone to cut their phones down or off. I called the meeting to order. I've got the invocation. Commissioner Foster's got the pledge. And we had the approval of the minutes. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There will be a budget amendment number 66 that Allison will go over when she goes over the budget amendments in her section under consent agenda. But also, under consent as well, we would like to add a number nine. Basically, this would be to exempt a lot out in Park East from restricted covenants. This is where our shell building is. And as the board is aware, we've had some interest in the shell building. There's some concerns with the zoning. This is the first step to remove the restricted covenant. But we have gotten on the city's agenda to change the zoning and add this as a conditional use moving forward. So this will help us hopefully sell the building and move forward and make that a very positive asset for our community.
How about the other part of the land? Is it, we're going to go into the same scenario again?
Well, it just depends on the use of what's being projected for, you know, the other parcels.
They don't have anything that's zoned for industrial park?
They do, but this, what they're looking at with this potential company is a much higher use than. And the thought process, and I think I know where your thought is, and we agree with it, was to rezone the entire area?
Yes, that makes sense.
However, we were trying to do this quickly and to deal with this specific problem now. But it would take a little bit longer and a little bit more involved to go back and look at the entire rezoning and map changes and those type things. This was the quickest thing to do to move forward with the project. And I do want to thank Barry and Andrew also for their help as well on this.
Well, that, I understand that for this particular partial, but we don't need to wait till it pops up again. We need to go ahead and start working on getting the rest of it.
Yes, sir. And again, we solely agree. Again, we were just wanting to make sure this was, the part was done and the shell building lot was done as quickly as possible.
Okay. So I've just got a question that pops up, and that is, just by this board agreeing to this, the board can remove restrictive covenants on individual lots?
Yes.
Really?
Individual owner can.
The original owner?
The county's original owner. And they were to stay in place for, I think, 20 years, if my memory serves me correctly, and that's been long past.
Yeah, those 20 years are gone, right? Or is there a provision that they automatically renew at the end of 20 years?
They're on until they're removed.
Until they're removed? Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we also do have a walk-on as well with Ginger, a paying classification update. One of your budget amendments is looking at adding a new position to the Kendall, specifically to help out at the jet port. It is not a jet port position. It is a position that will work directly for Kendall. But the thought process was, we really do need somebody focused on the jet port, but once there is no issues or maintenance that needs to be done at the jet port, the person works for Kendall and not the jet port.
Correct.
And also, we were upgrading, since we were doing this, changing a grade on a housekeeping assistant from a grade 52 to a 54. I believe during the budget process, at the 3%, it pushed that person to the top of the range, and we needed to change the grade, you know, so it wasn't bumping at the top of the range. I did say that correctly?
You could actually push them out of that range if the person was ineligible for the group at that cost.
Right.
So we're requesting we change the housekeeping assistant to a grade 54 to allow everyone
to get the 3%.
So making this right now the jet port is being done by Kendall's department?
Yes, sir.
But you're going to hire someone to do, to be just there all the time?
Not, no, no, not out focusing on the jet port. Especially during the spring and summer months with grass cutting season, we have a lot of issues with grass and maintenance and ditches and weed eating and those type things. But when that person is not specifically needed at the jet port, will work directly for Kendall and anywhere else that Kendall needs. Yes, sir.
I just kind of don't know how they keep up with all the things that's going on and everything.
And this was specifically, the position has been pushed for for really multiple years by the Jet Port Commission as well. So, and we have kept up with it as much as possible, but it's got to the point where it's just overwhelming to try to keep up with it as, to the expectations, I think, that the jet port would like.
And something happened played into it too. A lot of the land out there around the jet port, we were able to farm it. We could lease it out, it'd be farmed, as long as it was a low crop. But what, the F A, A A has changed their rules and all, and we can't do that anymore. It's, we've had, I mean, they could put beans or sweet potatoes that morning, and that was fine, but they've changed their rules. And we've got, I don't know how many acres is out there, a lot that has to be moved.
I think it's 200 acres.
Yeah, that's a bunch. Let me ask you, let me go back to the plot. This part is, the part that we're going to rezone or take the restricted covenants off, is that just for that lot, or is it, did adjacent lots go into it in case?
Lot, lot eight. Just the one lot.
Right.
Well, just I guess what I'm asking, if they wanted to, whoever this is, wanted to expand, we got to go back and redo it again, is that correct?
It, yes, sir. But again, that goes back, what we're hoping to do is, once the immediacy is done, we'll go back and just do an entire rezoning of the property.
Right.
And that is all that I have as far as changes. So Allison will add budget amendment number 66. Then we will add the paying class changes, and that'll be number 10. And the walk-on for the change in restricted covenants at Park East for lot eight will be number nine.
Okay. Okay. And county managers' report, Board of Commissioners' committee report, and we do.
Oh, we'll go back to special presentations.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Then after adjustment of the agenda, a lot of special presentations, one from North Carolina Freedom Fest by Mr. Doug McGrath. And that PowerPoint is in your agenda packet. Number two is a public hearing to receive public comments on proposed road name change, specifically renaming Jerusalem Road to Jerusalem Church Road, located off of Drummersville Road within the Indian Springs Township and the Seven Springs Postal District. And Barry is here. If you have questions now, or you're going to wait till the public hearing?
Thank you, Lord.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Has there been any opposition to this? I don't think so. That's all I want to know.
Yeah.
And then we go to consent agenda. Number one is applications for elderly or disabled exclusion on pages 28 through 33. That's recommended for approval by staff. Number two, application for disabled veteran exclusion, and that has been reviewed and recommended for approval by staff. Number three, applications for present use value on pages 36 through 39. And again, those have been recommended for approval by staff. And then number four is our budget amendments, and I will turn that to Allison.
Okay, your first budget amendment is on page 40 of your agenda. With budget amendment number 30. This is to appropriate $537,023 in grant revenues for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This is passed through from the Department of Public Safety. And then we pay it out to the programs that the JCPC has approved. For the day reporting center, we are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $20,940 in counseling fees. And this is also a pass-through related to the opioid grant the sheriff's office received. There's a nuance with that grant that is requiring us to pay this through the day reporting center. So that is why we are having to set it up this way, but these are grant funds. For the sheriff's office, they have received controlled substance tax monies in the amount of $2,182.16, and are appropriating it to their line item for that, programs, excuse me, office supplies, non-capital office supplies. For cooperative extension, they've received their 2122 grant allocation from East Point. This is the East Point Prevention Grant in the amount of $68,216.87. And you will see the various line items that have been appropriated to carry out that grant activity. For the Health Department, they are re-appropriating their COVID-enhancing detection funds in the amount of $1,076,950. As you recall, if it is a straight reappropriation, just from the last year to the next year, we don't bring those before you. But because there was some movement in these line items, we needed to bring this before you and let you all see it. But this is the same grant that they received last year. They're just allocating according to how they feel like they'll carry out that grant this year.
What do you mean, there was some movement?
So when they originally appropriated the budget for this grant, they had it in, you know, various line items, but as, as the COVID pandemic is progressing, they're, they're kind of focusing on vaccinations. They're having to reallocate it to different line items according to where they think they'll spend that money.
Okay.
We have another one for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This is actually related to the 19, excuse me, the 2021 grant funds. There was a program that did not spend all of their money, so they do owe the state $2,472 back. They will send that money to us, and we'll remit it to the state. Budget amendment number 44 has already been discussed as part of the add-on with the change in the pay plan. This is for facilities to appropriate funds for a new position. It will be primarily at the jet port, will be used in other areas as well for facilities. We have a budget amendment for economic development in the amount of $49,600. This is to appropriate funds for a source study with Mount Olive and City of Goldsboro. And we do anticipate that we have a future state grant that will most likely reimburse the county for the cost of this study.
Most likely. You did hear that.
We're not guaranteed, but we should be able to get reimbursement for that once the project has been approved in the state budget.
Worst-case scenario, would we not be able to reimburse ourselves from the COVID funds that?
We should be able. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that is worst case?
Yes, sir.
For soil and water, you have a budget amendment in the amount of $6,700, appropriating fund balance for professional services. This is the ongoing stream restoration project with Withers Ravenel, and they have done some previous services for us on this project. But we are, they are requiring, they are not, the state is requiring approval from various agencies, and Withers Ravenel will assist us in navigating that and do some construction administration as well, or oversight. You have a budget amendment for the jet port, and there's actually two of these, numbers 51 and 52. They are for two different projects, but both of them have the same explanation. The first is for corporate area expansion grant, appropriating fund balance in the amount of $107,324. The second one is for the apron pavement rehab grant, and there is some grant funds coming in for that, and then some appropriated fund balance in the amount of $30,270. So the fund balance appropriated is not additional funds that they're requesting from the general fund. It's actually remaining funds that were transferred for another project, and we did not end up using all of that. So we do have some fund balance left over that we can allocate for these grants, and we don't have to transfer additional monies over from the general fund.
But this is in the enterprise?
Yes, sir. It's in the jet port enterprise fund.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I might comment on that also. You know, we did receive a huge grant, but unfortunately, when you receive a grant, you've got to have a 10% match from local funds. So these huge grants are great, but we've got to come up with a match. Wasn't it 4.1? It was huge.
It was 4.1 for the apron?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, budget amendment number 58 is for cooperative extension. They have received a grant in the amount of $30,000. This is called the SINAR Extension Pilot Program. This will be used to help reduce sales and use of underage tobacco purchases. You have a budget amendment for solid waste in the amount of $5,310. This is actually a reappropriation from the prior year, but it was in the incorrect accounting code, and it should have been in capital. So we are moving it from repairs and maintenance to capital. This will be used to repair the gate at the Rosewood Convenience Center. Okay, and then we have the fund budget amendment, number 66. So budget amendment number 66 is a budget amendment that is going to be dated back to June 30. This is to comply with GASB 87. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are who issues the standards that we must report by and account for our funds by. And so GASB 87 actually required us, we have agency, what we've always called agency funds, that were never budgeted because they were strictly passed through. So it was where we were basically serving as a custodian of funds for various purposes. We remit, we collect taxes from municipalities, we in turn remit those to municipalities. We, when an inmate comes into the detention center, the money that they have is collected. If anyone deposits money for them to use, it's collected. And then in turn, when they leave, what they have not spent on commissary goods or damages will be given back to them. So it's strictly a pass-through, but it's not a grant. And we had several of these. So the ones that I just mentioned will still be able to stay where they're at. They're going to be called custodial funds now instead of agency funds. And the GASB looked at them as truly fiduciary. But the remaining, which is the ones that you see on this budget amendment, the remaining activities we had in that fund, they did not feel like classified, or truly met the new definition of a custodial fund. And there was, there was different things we had to go through to see whether it met that definition. They had a flow chart and all these things. So I'll quickly go over these activities, and if you have any questions, feel free to, please stop me. All of these activities are, they won't change in what they've been doing, it's just where we'll be accounting for these at. So the first one you see is current expense, and it has a new fund number, it's 201. The corresponding revenue is late listing penalties and fines and forfeitures. So as you all know, if we collect fines and forfeitures and late listings, they are required to be remitted to the schools. And so we had always run that through a payable line item, but we are now being required to budget for this and remit it in a special revenue fund. So these will still go to the schools. Nothing will change in that area, it's just an accounting change. The second one is, you will see program supplies, senior citizen tours. This is an account that we've had for a really long time. Before COVID, the seniors would take various trips and do different tours of things, you know, around the state. And sometimes, you know, we would receive sort of like, I guess, grants or monies from the vendors to help pay for that, and sometimes the seniors would, you know, contribute to that. So that money is going to be brought in-house to the senior citizen department and will be accounted for in their departmental line items and be budgeted for. The next one you see is direct service allocation, and the corresponding revenue for that is, I'll have to get my ruler out. The corresponding revenue for that is client account income. So we, the social services department is, if they have clients that, you know, are not able to manage their funds, we receive their social security income, the different incomes that they have in a bank account. And we've always called it our client's trust account. This is a normal practice across the state. However, GASB has asked that we rename this and put it in a special fund called representative payee funds. And so that activity will be brought into a special revenue fund, and that income will still come in for those clients. It's just that this will all be paid out, and you'll see it budgeted. There is some concern about budgeting for these funds because it is not, this is not county money, this is client's money. I think there is some questions being asked by the LGC to the state to see if we can get some flexibility on having to budget for these. But as of right now, we do have to provide a budget for them. The next one is programs, excuse me, civil rents, payments, and fees. And you will see this is for the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office, when the clerical court assesses various civil fees to citizens, the sheriff's office goes out and collects on those, and then they receive an administrative part of that so that they can cover the cost of collecting those. That's always also been a special, an agency fund because it was something that's being assessed by the courts and then in turn paid out to the courts. So this is also being required to come in to a general fund or special revenue fund. We felt like we could manage it within the sheriff's office budget, so you will see that I've put it under 1104310, which is the sheriff's office department. And there's a revenue and corresponding expenditure for that. Then you have donations for soil and water. So back in 2011, there was sort of a scholarship fund set up for students by the Soil and Water Conservation Board, and I think at the time it was a little less than $10,000. That was set up also as an agency fund. That money was coming in, and then the board would get together and approve the scholarships. Because it doesn't meet the requirements of a true custodial fund, now we're moving it in under soil and water and designating that activity. So all of these will be like restricted fund balances because they can't be used on anything else. And then finally, we have tax, for tax collections, we always had a fund that was called Enforced Collections. So this is the activity of the tax office before it goes to Andrew's office, before it goes into foreclosure. And so this is their various collection activities that they do to try to get the delinquents caught up in our tax office. And so we are, that did not meet the requirements either, so we are bringing that in under the tax department's number, and we'll be accounting for that with special codes as well. That's all passed through, so I mean, you know, if they do collect the taxes, obviously that part goes in the general fund, but there's various fees that go along with that, that, you know, if the sheriff's office gets involved or the courts get involved, there's advertising fees, things like that. So all of that would be paid out of those funds. So this is, this is our new, this is our, these are all new activities that are coming in that will increase our budget, and we will also do a budget amendment later in the year to account for the 2122 agency, what we've always called agency funds. So this is a new thing for us. It doesn't really impact, you know, revenue that we can spend or extra expenditures for us because it's pretty much a flow-through. But do you all have any questions? I know I just threw a lot of, a lot of stuff at you.
I got one. You said the, the late listings, files, and tortures, but that's the 458675 that goes to the schools?
Right.
And this is, you said it goes back to June 30. Is, have they already received that?
Yes, yes. We pay that out monthly.
So they've already received that minister?
That's correct.
Now get an additional?
That's right. All of these numbers are our annual numbers. It's very difficult to budget these funds because they're not operational for us, so they're hard to predict.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this?
It seems like you've increased your workload.
They're, they're good at that for us. They keep us busy.
No more questions on budget amendments. We got a number five, motion to approve Bonnie Farm subdivision, section 10, final plat as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board, and Barry is here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Barry.
This is a final plat for Bonnie Farm, section 10. There's actually one lot, it's lot 24. It is at the end of Clintwood Drive. It's an existing street within the subdivision, which is right off of Genoa Road. There is a, this road was built within the past year. They actually just recorded that phase that this is in, or the addition, neighboring phase, not too long ago, but we did have a built the standards letter for the road. All the improvements are there. The lot size is 27,998 square feet. The minimum required is 20,000, so it does meet the minimum requirement. And the planning board does recommend approval of this request. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
It says on the, the end, it says temporary circle. Is that just, that's not going to be there for?
Right. It won't be there forever. They're going to extend the street eventually for an additional phase. So it'll circle around eventually.
And then, and the way it works, Chris, down here where this, the circle is?
Yeah.
If the street, if the doorway with the, and the street continues, that circle part that's, that's in the circle will be deeded to the, to the property owner, correct?
That's right.
It's actually part of the lot, but I didn't know this was the end of the, the end of the subdivision, so thought that was going to be like temporary, the first equipment could turn around. I didn't ask the question, but I'm going to. But why, why would they not have that in the original plot plan? Why would they add the one lot?
You know, I don't know. But they did have room at the end of the street for it, but why they didn't do it at the time, I'm not sure. If they just didn't, maybe they just didn't realize or just what, but I'm not exactly sure.
A blind person wouldn't see that. If the land was there and you owned it, yeah.
It was probably a restriction from the county or the state wanting, and that went away, now they can do it.
Yeah. Okay. It don't line up across the street either.
And then next is number six, motion to approve Stonebridge subdivision, section three, final plat as recommended by the planning board.
All right, Stonebridge, section three. This is, again, a final plat for 18 lots. This is off of Bartlett Road, right there as you're heading Outlay Memorial, going out towards Green County. This is the last phase of Stonebridge. So there are several areas where they're doing the lots. Lots 15 through 17, if you look at your, your plan, it's on the right side of the page, Aspen Ridge Drive at the end of that street. Lots 21 through 32 are at the very back of the subdivision, or the top of the sheet. And then lots 44 through 68 are, excuse me, 44 through 46 are on the left. And so basically, they left these out of phase two. The streets were in, but they left them out because they had to delineate the wetlands. They wanted to make sure they had the wetland locations correct. And so they have done that, and they delineated those wetlands. They wanted to make sure they had enough spot base on those lots without impacting those wetlands. So that's why there was a delay in this recording. So this will finish out phase three. The average lot size for this actually is 54,568 square feet because there are some rather large lots. And all the improvements are in. We do have a built the standards letter, and the planning board does recommend approval.
Barry, when you say wetlands, can you explain that a little bit for me on wetlands? Is this in the flood? On wetlands, is this in the flood?
Right. There's, um, there are floodplains, um, and there are some floodplains on this property on the right side. Kind of that, um, that darker area on the right side. And then there are wetlands, which are a little harder to see. But those are the areas where you have, almost looks like, um, chicken prints or, uh, bird prints there on the, on the map. Those are actual wetlands. And the difference is floodplain, uh, basically will flood every so often. The wetlands are areas where you have soils that stay wet and areas that may stay wet continuously. And with wetlands, you technically cannot disturb those based on the Corps of Engineer requirements. So they do have to delineate those separately from the wetland or from the floodplain because you cannot go in and disturb them. Floodplain, you can go in and build a home and lift it. But in your wetlands, you are limited in what you can do there, so.
That branch actually flows into the Honda Swamp, like toward, um, Lane Town Road as well.
Any additional questions from Barry? Okay. And then number seven is motion to approve septic drain field easement at 304 Green Street, Goldsboro, uh, between Wayne County and Virginia Lee Simpson, contingent upon approval by the attorneys. And again, Carol's handing out the agreement. We've been working with the Simpsons. This is really at the end of the runway. We've also worked with Jason Elliott in, um, making sure that this would not be any interference to, uh, anything that's happening at the jet port. But this has been requested by the Simpsons because, um, I was just needing a, a, a septic easement.
Green Street's on the opposite, no, it's on the south side of Combs Road there.
Thank you.
I know you said that ended runway, but it's not that initially ended runway. It's like.
Right.
Yeah, right.
The thing that we want to make sure, it kind of goes into what you talked about, the new position that is approved to keep the grass cut. We're going to insist that they cut the grass where this is. This is two lots, but the lots are right on.
117 and Grant Street, yeah.
And that is not in this agreement. It's just been handed to you.
Right.
It's not.
Yeah, we're going to give. It's subject to our.
Right, okay, gotcha.
But we, we have checked with the airport commission. We've also checked with Jason that this should not be a problem or an issue.
And it will ultimately help you a little if they go cut the grass.
Right.
So we're going to be able to enforce if they could have the grass.
If we put it in agreement, okay.
We're in the agreement.
So I'm not exactly sure where this is located based upon this map, but it's right off of 117.
The two lot, the two lots that the county owns are on 117.
Okay.
The one is back behind that on Green, Green Street.
It's right across from the old, um, Ocean Park, yeah, over on the right hand side. If we get airport, if we barrel from airport level.
And they're wanting an easement to go across that for a septic or just to use the, um, part of, of those lots as a, um, drain field?
Okay, so they're actually going to be using it, so.
Right.
And we, so we have no use for these in the future because once they put their drain lines on there.
You can't build on them. You can't do anything with it. It's pretty much bought it.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, yeah. That's Corbin Hill somewhere else.
Well, we got no use for it. At least we don't have to own it. Okay.
All right, that's the only reason.
And we checked, though, the biggest concern was making sure, you know, number one, you can't put a department circle on it anyway. But, um, a- again, we did check with Jason and the airport commission and they were all fine.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not agreeing to this part of it.
Um.
It'll be changed.
It'll be changed, right. It, it contingent upon, uh, final approval by our county attorney.
Got it. Okay.
And then number eight, uh, motion to cancel the September 7th, uh, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, again, that is the Tuesday after Labor Day. And we've been, uh, that request. And then the two, uh, new additions, uh, we talked about, um, when we, uh, discussed adjustments. Motion to adopt resolution 202126, resolution adopting the 39th Amendment to the Position Classification of Pay Plan for the county. Uh, again, that is to change the, uh, classification for the, um, housekeeping assistant and also adding the new person, uh, for Kendall. And then number 10, motion to approve notice of removal of certain lands from declarations of protected covenants relating to Wayne County Industrial Park and Business Park, dated September 7th, 1991. And again, this is the removal of restricted covenants, uh, for lot eight out of Park East. And then after consent agenda, there's county managers' report, board commissioners, commissioners committee reports, closed session, and then adjournment.
Do commissioners have any additions or? If none, we do need to go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
To discuss, to discuss matters concerning the location of, uh, businesses in Wayne County to consult with your attorneys, uh, to preserve attorney-client privilege and, uh, to consider, uh, uh, performance of, uh, individual.
We will go into closed session.
Motion will go into closed session. I don't think we're sure it's signed right here. We'll quit back.